The following is going to be the Hillsborough City Council order. First on the agenda is the White's Williams, please stand. Next up, the White's Williams to fly in on this case in America and to the world for which the saints, one nation, and your God, you do this all with the liberty and justice for all. Next on the agenda is your statements and first is wishing to address the council. We have two, Mark Brown, if you'd like to step up to the mic, please state your address. Remember, please keep your comments ready for two minutes.
I'm Darryl Brown and I'm a 301 Craig's here in Hillsborough. And I can tell I've been working with Ms. Henderson a lot with some of the infrastructure challenges that cities often have. All charities and suffering from the same challenges, older towns have trees and water issues, so we work with a lot. And I've worked with Chief Hany a lot with our school resource officer program. So in the approach of three years, I've gotten the opportunity to work within quite a mill. I've got to know some of you, mayors in the city council, certainly know people who know you quite well. Second, police force and other city officials. So I just wanted to kind of make an urge to the people who serve, especially who volunteer, who want to build challenging situations. We've had our challenges and we're very directly with the straightforward Ms. Henderson and Chief Hany. Our challenges, improved communication, but see if I can approach it in a fair, but straightforward way. I'm going to send back their turn. I think we've made great progress over the time I've been here. I know some of the police officers who might be there and quite well. So the response that I would give from my perspective is very positive, very good. And you approach me in a straightforward manner. That's what a challenge is to take care of those issues. And they're always bringing up pretty much anything to take care of along those either. But I just want to give my perspective over almost three years here in five hundred communities that are challenges. They take care of it. And here there have been minimal distractions as far as my seat and what I've been. So I appreciate the potential challenges. They could have been quite disastrous for us because of that communication. I get it, in fact, put today on the road a part of it. I just appreciate it. I just wanted to say thank you to police officers who serve, especially to those who volunteer time and improve.
We have the baseless agari.
You said two, not three, three?
I said two, so I'm going to leave tonight to let you know a little extra and get a little wrong too.
I just wanted to be remember a straight speech here tonight. Got to keep, you kind of pass the rules. I'm ready as you started up. You know, if you're going to keep passing rules, guys, to restrict people's rights. Y'all, seriously, I have no idea what's coming for all y'all, really do. Anyway, I'm not here for the council, I'm here for the people, you know? Guys keep spending all this money. We got outlet hall that's going to bring in big business allegedly. At the same time, it's going to be taken away from smaller businesses here. I'm sure there's some questions, so the tax rate you guys have worked out, so they don't have to pay any taxes for the first few years. And since we don't have the money to fix all this stuff here, we're just going to keep asking the people in Hillsborough, keep paying seventeen percent more water tax and whatever tax you need next agenda. I mean, it's, they're just going to keep draining the people. So until the spending stops, it's not going to go to that speed. Moving on to other things, because I know some people said they don't want me pointing tonight. So I'm trying to keep my hands off the podium. Motion for the court, please, let me speak, thank you. You know, we have officers who are drinking off duty, retired or not, they still call under police policy. I'm already filing a complaint, I know that's going on, we're investigating. You know, the spending still won't stop. Tony King took a leadership class, took first class plane ticket, first class five star hotel, spent all that money and I'm trying to request records for them, they want to put in a fee schedule to minimize on what he actually spent that on. He spent all y'all's money. You're either going to be forced to move, lose your job, or just going to keep paying them what they're asking for. So I already know y'all are going to vote for the fee schedule, I already know that sounds like it. Y'all are like me, I'm the professional advocate, you guys like to follow me behind my back. But you know what, you guys are hurting these people. I'm not here speaking for them, you guys are supposed to be speaking for them, but you're not. And you want to, too, if you go up there, are, but most of you are voting against these people. These people are hurting. There's not money out there, this county's not great, but we're just going to keep spending this water and your money. Where's the street speed limits? Where's the sewer? Why are we still not getting a lot because you want to raise that price? But anyways, go ahead, do what you guys are going to do. I'm going to let y'all have the rest of your party to vote against what you need because it's not Hill's Borough's foundation then. And do what you guys do best, which is screw over the public. Anyways, you guys have a great night and hopefully they don't keep raising y'all's taxes.
Okay, moving along to the consent agenda. Delivering an act of approval to the management of the record review now from August nineteenth to twenty twenty five. Act on the approval of bills. Delivering an act on a resolution accepting the recognition and planning and zoning conditions to approve the preliminary and final class of standard rendition in the city of Hillsborough on a surfer tractor land of being two point five acres in the Moses Johnson survey. Abstract number four seven five, being the same property by reference as included in volume twenty one oh five, page four hundred and ninety, volume twenty three twenty seven, page five sixty of the official public records of Hill County, Texas. Also known as thirteen oh four, thirteen oh six, Car Street. Delivering an act on a resolution regarding the request by the Main Street Board to close various streets for the purpose of holding anti-cowling on September nineteenth and Autumn Fest October eleventh and Halloween in Hillsborough on October twentieth in related events. Delivering an act on a resolution entered into an agreement that texts not aviation for a new automated weather observation system and allow the city manager to execute on necessary documents. Delivering an act on a resolution allowing an eighteen B survey to be conducted and completed at Hillsborough Municipal Airport and allowing the city manager to execute on necessary documents. Counsel, if they even have any question regarding any of those on the consent agenda. Here you go, I'll let you take a motion. Motion, second.
Councilmember Clinton. Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Riquelme.
Moving on to the record agenda, hold a public hearing separately. Delivering an act on the order to establish a fee schedule for open records request.
Mayor and council, the amounts that may be charged by municipalities for fulfilling open records requests are limited by statute and the maximum charges allowed by statute would not come close to actually paying the cost of fulfilling the requests. We have received, do we have a total for the month of August?
I believe we have about ninety-five requests for the month of August.
So we have ninety-five requests in March of August. We're talking, you know, every time something comes in, we have to reach out to all the different departments. People in all the other departments have to figure out whether they've got records that involve whatever the request is. It's, it's an important responsibility and it takes a lot of time to do it right. And for the most part, we're not producing copies. You know, people aren't paying for copies. But there's a limited, very limited amount that we're allowed to recover for staff time to pull the answers together. And it's not for every request. If it can be quickly fulfilled and it only takes a few minutes, we're not, we're not even allowed to charge for that and we don't. The effort in adopting locally the charges that are permitted at the state level is just to say so that everybody in town isn't paying extra for this service that specifically benefits just a few. And if there are requests that involve a lot of work and go above and beyond in terms of the cost, this allows us to recover some of those costs and put that back in the budget for, you know, go with that. So I think we all understand why this is here, this is the second thing. And this ordinance basically just says that we in Hillsborough will charge what the state allows us to charge.
Counsel, any questions? Okay, this is a public area, open it up to anyone in the audience and I'll address the fee schedule for the marks of the records.
Don't think I was ever considering a handful of them would take so long. Yeah, so someone might say, give me copies of all of the time sheets of all the police officers from January twenty twenty four through present day. Or, or, you know, I want to know if there are any emails sent or received by any city employee mentioning X, Y, Z. Or, yeah. Well, and you can, and if it's super open ended, you have the ability to go back to the person and say, you know, can I give you, you know, I want to see all, all financial transactions and the invoices and the canceled checks and the bank statements. I mean, these are sites where you have to pull from all which different places. You got copies, you got it. If they ask for it, they're all electronic form, probably we still have to make copies. We have to go and scan them in to get them in the, it's not like we don't have to do that work just because we're not handing them a physical piece of paper. And so in some cases, you can go back and say, can I just give you a list of all of the things? And then you pick the five that you want to see all the backup for. But sometimes they say, no, we just want to see, we want all of it. And it, it, it depends. We get a, we get a lot of different requests. And it's sort of, it, it, some of them are easily fulfillable and wouldn't, wouldn't result in it.
So currently, in Hillsborough, is there any challenge?
Correct. We've, we've been advised over the years that it's so much hassle to charge a fee and you're not going to recover the cost anyway.
Yep.
That, that is, but, but we are, we are spending hours and hours and hours of staff time. And at some point, you say, is this a responsible use of everybody else's tax dollars?
I have a question. Of the national request separated in the month of August, was the majority of those made by one or two specific individuals?
Yes. Yes. And, and historically, council is aware, historically, we've had folks over the years where we would get a request or two every day for months and years. And it, it, it sort of depends. If it's, you know, if somebody calls and asks us a question, they don't have to fill out an open record request. We're going to try and answer that question. But sometimes, sometimes it's a lot. When I'm talking about one more description, when I'm talking about me or anybody else in here that calls and says, I need to know all about one reference last year, what did I use? No, that's not what I'm talking about. Okay. So we're talking about, I don't know, what, police, police officers who are working at this time or something like that. Yes. Or, or, you know, give me the professional credentials for everybody who's worked at this department for the last five years and
Anybody asking any questions regarding this agenda?
We'd have to work, it would have to take us more than thirty minutes of pulling something for their, it could be a char. I mean, I'm estimating, but I'm thinking it at least thirty minutes on a single request. And, and so if you're asking, I mean, first of all, if you're asking about your water issue, which I know if you saw your water issue as our customer, unlimited, like that's our, that's what you're paying for in your water rates. But even if you, you know, if you're, just if you're curious, like, hey, I saw this, you know, the budget's posted online and I saw this line up, what does that mean? I'll just get on the phone with you and walk through what it means. Most, most, most ordinary questions that people have, it, we might have to go chase a record down. But again, I can't imagine it taking thirty minutes to find it. It's, it's like, we need lots and lots of stuff, you know? And so under these charges, you know, for thirty minutes of work, the charge ran seven bucks. You're not making any loans. Right, right.
And does that, is there a very significant amount of effort required and reresponsibility to close?
Yeah, this, the, it, it, well, it's, so the state limits us to fifteen dollars an hour. Nobody is doing this work.
Gets paid.
Yeah, is paid as low as fifteen dollars an hour. I mean, all the people that are responding to these requests because of the legal ramifications of getting it wrong. They've got how to, and, and training to learn how to do this is not something we recover costs from. Seeking legal advice is not something we recover costs from. All of the, all of the other things. I mean, that's just part of our responsibility to, to know how to do what we're supposed to do.
And that's not loaded costs?
Right.
That's just straight flat hourly, doesn't include?
We're allowed to add twenty percent for administrative or over.
That doesn't cover a big amount.
So it takes your seven dollars to eight dollars.
Where I used to be involved in forty one fifty two requests, it was never less than fifteen dollars. So seven to eight hours, like, weird.
Yeah, I can't imagine. It, even though there are requests that we get, you know, because it's per request. I, I have a hard time seeing that one get to be over thirty bucks.
You want to ask another? Okay, we'll close the public area and entertain a motion.
Councilmember Clinton. Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Hernandez. Councilmember Riquelme.
Next on the agenda, hold a public hearing, the first reading, and delivering on the ordinance submitted in the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget.
Mayor and council, as you know, we are authorized and expected to, at some point during the fiscal year, true up the numbers based on emerging things that were unanticipated at the time that the budget was adopted. The main things that drive that, sorry, I just had to thought about how abstract I was going to get with this. It's like, we're going to do that. Basically, the, the things that have happened this year that comprise the biggest changes in this amendment are that we underestimated a little bit in terms of our tax collections. So we performed better in collecting the taxes that were assessed than we were prepared to because you always want to be conservative in what you estimate. And we had a decrease in our sales tax proceeds because we had to give some sales tax rebates. So those two things affected revenues. We also had revenue in the form of a firewater ambulance grant and then the expense for that ambulance grant. So that was a big in and out item. We also had an increase in the police department because we repaid the proceeds from our line of credit, which was vehicle purchases in the past.
Counsel, any questions? This is a public area, so open up the first reading to anyone in the audience that would like to address Agenda item number twelve. Okay, you have a hundred and forty five minutes and move on to the next agenda item. Hold a public hearing, first reading, and delivering on the ordinance adopted in the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. And then act to set a date if you want to vote on the budget.
Mayor and council, we've had several meetings talking about the need for a very limited budget for next year. This is a very conservative budget. You see that we have an increase in general fund expenditures of about a million dollars and an increase in water and sewer expenditures of about eighty thousand dollars. These things do not reflect a big increase in spending. They reflect continuing to do the things that we are in business to do, we're not taking on anything major. What we have done is responded to significant increases in health insurance, as you know. We have made some modest salary adjustments and we have made some targeted salary adjustments where we determined that similar physicians with similar responsibility were not being compensated relative to the topic in a way that was as equitable as we want to be. So we've made what we think are corrective salary adjustments. But for the most part, this is just an increase in overall cost of doing business. You know, things are just more expensive here over here and this is basically why the plan pre-low.
Okay, this is a public hearing, open it up to anyone in the audience that would like to address Agenda item number thirteen.
My question would be different from yours.
That's just going to be my question, is that, I suppose it's something way out of that.
That is, that should be outlet mall. Got off the line.
Outlet mall.
Right. That, that, that two oh seven on the highway should be tourism and the one three three seven should be the outlet mall.
Okay, so outlet mall and tourism are split on both of those.
Yes.
Okay.
And those expenses are to be offset with the seller?
Yes. So the anticipated demolition of the outlet mall is about one point two million dollars. We expect that to hit this fiscal year. The anticipated sale of the southern portion of the mall. So it's the part that we own is in two pieces. The, the long skinny strip along the service road is what we own is in two pieces. The agreed upon price for the developer to buy back the second piece from us is two point three million dollars. So that will exceed our expenses by three million. And it could happen in the next fiscal year, but we're not counting on it happening in the next fiscal year. So we cannot show them.
So are we paying for the, is Hillsborough trying to do the demolition, or is he paying?
We are paying for the demolition. We are paying for it. Yes. The, the agreement was on the portion that the developer owns, he would do the demolition. On the portion that we own, he would do the demolition. But that if he succeeded in bringing the agreed upon amount of businesses within the agreed amount of time, we would reimburse up to a hundred percent of the demolition cost. That was in the development agreement. So by bringing in Panda Express, Chili's, Waffle House, and we can now say Chick-fil-A, and then there's one more that is coming that we cannot yet name. That will be the six, we'd read for Chick-fil-A counts two. So that is the six required for him to get his full demolition cost reimbursed.
And has it been any kind of a glitch, if you go, you're not sure?
No.
Okay, some are, you're, some of the city employees are telling residents that they're bad. I don't know why, I don't know what to tell, I'm just I don't know what to say.
Oh, well, so I just want to get out of others that there is all people looking back and forth when it comes to construction plans. And there was some back and forth about a masonry construction on the exterior of the building. Everybody is satisfied, but there were, but there were questions back and forth. Hey, what if you do this? Well, you know, we kind of like you to do that, so.
And the issue of the demolition cost, that's essentially a founder.
Yes.
We're putting, we're putting cash out of front with the backing of the coverage of all of the construction costs.
Yes, yes, and then some. And, and this is all exactly the development agreement that we made with Laser Retail, you know, two years and four months ago. And it's basically come to pass just exactly as he said. You know, he said it takes three years to get everything done. You know, three years from that time, we're going to have our first business. It's, in the, in the beginning, when it is possible for none of it to work and it's still terrible and you think, what would we give to make this deal happen? Versus what do we have to live with if nothing happens and it continues to deteriorate and the last few businesses close and everything else? And this is how we continue to be known by everybody up and down the interstate. It, it's, it's easy to, now that the costs are coming due, you go, oh man, that's a lot of money. And that's true. But you have to put yourself in the position of back when you thought there's no way we can make something happen and you had the opportunity to make something happen. And now we're, we're doing our part of what we said we would do. He's done what he's, you know, he's done his part.
I have a question, I want to point out, you said that should play one and S two.
Yes, and I think it's important for people to understand that's because historically their sales are considerably higher than any other restaurant. So we didn't just arbitrarily decide the way they count us two. We let them count us two because even their lowest type of stores bring in considerably more tax revenue than we typically do. And they take up kind of a double footprint because they have to have the extra drive through space to do the volume that their stores do. So he said, well, you know, I've only got so much space, do I, you know, will this, so that's the deal.
Maybe also hypothetically, the amount of taxes we made off of the six restaurants versus how much we've made off from the hall in the past.
Oh, it's, oh, it's, it's unbelievable plus the property value. We're not, we're not abating, we're not abating any of these property taxes, like, nobody's getting it. I mean, this is, this is going to be a full value interstate retail development like we have not had.
Well, I think, I think that's really important that everybody is clear that, that not only has, has the performance made exactly what we expect in terms of timeline, but the revenue side of it is going to be an order of magnitude greater. but the revenue side of it is going to be an order of magnitude greater than anything we've seen before.
Well, since the mall was.
Well, since the mall's closed, yeah. Since, since it's been, and, and there's, there's nothing, there's nothing that's going to be that developers are wanting to take the back after that mall when it's clear that everything has been successful so far. So, I mean, this is, this is one of those slam dunk, win-win-win for everything.
I think it's something that it is, that's our, we're due to, so that's a very important.
Yeah.
And you just, and you have to be able to look forward a little bit. And it may not be perfect, right? It may be a little bit.
Well, and if we, and I'm sorry, council, permitting one other thing. I don't know if you guys remember what the interwebs were saying when we did this deal, but this is the dream lineup.
Yes.
This is exactly the things, these are exactly the things that people said, oh, well, if you guys can only do this, this is what we're getting. You know, we've tried to manage expectations and all that kind of stuff, but to get, to get Chick-fil-A and Chili's.
And Waffle.
And Waffle, I mean, and Waffle House. But, you know, I mean, we, we ought to feel pretty good about, about all of this. I mean, I think the Catholic comments on City Lake are just a disbelief that it's actually happening.
I have another question. Really doesn't have to do with the mall, but when all this first started, we were talking about the intersection of 35 and 22. Like right now, it's like, it's, it's going to be worse. And they said, well, that's up to the state and it takes two years for it to be able to do it. Did anybody ever contact the state?
Only to say that the intersection of 35 and 22 traffic was.
Yes, it's, it's going to be a nightmare. It's not going to be a nightmare.
Well, I, I think when we talk to the state, I mean, all of that surrounding, all of that surrounding roadway, you kind of remember nothing that we're contemplating is going to generate anything like the traffic that the mall used to generate. That intersection has handled way, 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 way more traffic than Chick-fil-A is handling. I mean, were you here then?
I've been here a while and this, this intersection now is worse than it's ever been. Even I was here when the mall was up.
Yeah.
And this, that intersection is too.
Talking about where McDonald's is?
Yeah, yeah, and the traffic's tough. They, they, you know, people coming off that highway. It's kind of bad, uh, it means. What I was asking was, did anybody ever contact the state to even go over something?
To be, to be, we had conversations with the state. We talked a little bit about the design of the exit ramps and things like that. And essentially, they didn't feel that the project was going to change the traffic all that much. So when somebody needs to go there, it's not, but that doesn't look close to there.
I didn't hear it.
And when somebody needs to go there seriously, we're going to say, oh, the state said we didn't have enough traffic. I mean, I'm going to not make any comments like that. I'm, I'm, you can't, and I'm going to stand next to it.
I'm just saying, I need somebody to kind of, like, work with me a minute. Because we would have more traffic. Once you give those restaurants here, we'd still have more traffic. It's not going to be the city, it's just going to be everybody else. I mean, and this is something that's small, was the amount that we passed by was like 70,000 cars a day. Well, you know, 10% of the stock. That's dead, much more traffic in that area.
Okay, any more comments from the audience on Agenda Item Number 13? Here now to close the public hearing, get your phones to the next agenda item.
Mayor, we need to have a chat.
Uh, let me add a thought. I'm sorry. Uh, will I have a motion?
I'll leave it to you.
I'll second.
Got a motion, I said.
Councilmember Clinton. Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Richmond.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, the whole public hearing deliberator proposed a 2025 ad-halor tax rate that exceeds the no new revenue tax rate, but does not exceed the voter approved tax rate instead of the 80% public.
Okay, when cities adopt a tax rate, there are coming two, there are two levels. There's the, the amount of money that brings in no more money than we got last year. And I don't know how you could possibly do that because all of your costs go up. And then there's the amount of money that is so much more money than last year that you have to have an election to approve it. Every year, we go somewhere in between those two things. Last year, we actually did adopt the no new revenue rate. This year, we're proposing to return not quite as high as it was before that, but I don't know, I think it's, it's not a half a million less.
Contrary of its 0.64.
Yeah, it was .8064 for a long, long time. We're now proposing .88024.
Got some more questions. Uh, this is a public hearing, so we'll open up to anyone in the audience that would like to address Agenda Item Number 14.
Essentially, we gave a break last year, but we can't just leave here.
I guess my question is just to, and maybe I'm just not being non-normative. So it says property tax would, so are we proposing that the property tax would increase by 1.84%?
That is the rate that we're proposing. So the rate is .80240 for every $100 in value. The amount that is increasing over last year's rate is.
Is that .004 or something like that? I don't even say it.
No, it's like .004, it's .004 less than it has been every year for the past 20 years-ish. Last year, it dropped.
And now it's going up a couple of.
It's going up a little bit, but not to where, it's not going back up to where it has been the last 20 years.
Anyone else in the audience that would like to address item number 14? Here now to close the public hearing, and what do we need to do here?
We need a record vote to propose a tax rate and set a main date for a future public hearing for the actual water tax rate.
Is there specific language for that?
Um, it, it should be in here, it should be on your agenda. The, the special mechanical language to adopt a tax rate is more magic than, than the language to propose the tax rate. Sorry, all this stuff is laid out very specifically, it's got to be down to the font size and stuff.
Okay, item number 14, I'll have a motion. Mayor, do you have a recommendation on meeting eight?
Yes, sir, the, the, the motion, the staff would recommend a motion to propose a 2025 ad-halor tax rate of 0.8024 for $100 in valuation and set September 16th, 2025 as the date of the public hearing.
I'm making notes, you know, we set September 17th as the day for the.
16th.
16th as the day for the proposed tax rate for 2025.
I think we're going to need, I think we're going to need the, the, the tax rate and the day.
The tax rate of .8024 to be established on September 16th, 2025 for the 2025.
As I understand it, the motion is to propose a 2025 tax, well, ad-halor tax rate of .8024 $100 in valuation and set September 16th, 2025 as the date of the public hearing. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We got, we got a motion in a second.
Councilmember Clinton.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Richmond.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, item number 15, hold up, public hearing first reading on ordinance adopting a 2025 ad-halor tax rate that exceeds the no new revenue tax rate, but does not exceed the voter approved tax rate.
Mayor and council, yes, we just talked about this. Our process requires that before we even adopt any ordinance that is going to set a fee or charge somebody money, we have to present that ordinance two times in a, in a regular counseling. So we're not voting on it tonight, but we propose it. We're going to have at the next meeting, number 16, we're going to have the public hearing and we're going to vote then. This is the first reading of that ordinance so that we will have that our own internal observations and, and had it twice at two regular counseling meetings. So we'll need to have a public hearing just in case anybody.
We'll open up to anyone in the audience that would like to address item number 15 in regards to the ad-halor tax rate. Here now to close the public hearing and move on to the city manager.
Okay. It's meeting one, everybody is, and all the hands of this. So you know, at first I'm going to show you the map of the, of the city and I just want, the only thing I want to point out here is that as we consider new development, we are trying to understand what it will cost to serve that development. And the reason this is a good map to have on the board when I talk about that is because it shows how the city has grown. So part of what we're trying to understand is, like, we understand we're going to have to pay for the water lines and sewer lines and the streets. But most people do not necessarily realize that the public safety budget together is more than all of our property tax revenue combined. So if you put together police, fire, EMS, animal control, all of that together is more than all of our property taxes put together. And so part of what we need to understand is if something is going to come in and it's going to be way at the edges of town, we might know what it's going to cost us to put in the water and sewer. We might be able to figure out how much it would cost for us to maintain those lines and those streets. How do we understand what it would cost to serve those areas with public safety? And so we've been reviewing the total number of public safety calls for the last 18 months to two years and reviewing the different response times, the travel times, the different parts of the city, and trying to understand and estimate the, the relative call load of a proposed new development. So, so there's a project that we're looking at to evaluate. It's one of our co-main projects. The anticipated year-over-year infrastructure depreciation cost, what we would be putting aside in place of infrastructure with if we were, you know, putting 140 aside over a year, is less than the cost to just serve a police and fire service. You know, $30,000 in depreciation versus like $150,000 in public safety cost. And that's a thing that we have not been taken, taken seriously. We haven't been measuring it. We've just been wondering why costs are coming up. And so that's, your staff is trying to wrap brains around that and wrap that into the evaluation of whether new projects, how desirable are they? And then do we want to incentivize them? You know, if they want to come and we've got to serve them on the grid, but are we going to incentivize them? Different math. All right, all of this is the same. All of this is the same. Let's talk a little bit about water. In the last month or so, there's been a lot of discussion about the reallocation of Lake Whitney. Reallocation of Lake Whitney has been on our slide for a long time. We've, we've got a request in to Rastor Authority to get water from Lake Whitney when they reallocate the water in that lake. Recently, the US Army Corps of Engineers had a meeting here in town that was very, very well attended and there's been a lot of question and concern and frankly anger and mistrust about the, the proposal that the Corps and Rastor Authority are suggesting moving forward. And I pulled a bunch of slides from that presentation and then I thought, probably I don't need to be trying to explain their project and their position. I can tell you how I understand it, but I think it's fair to let those agencies speak for themselves. What I will say is that their presentation indicated that the proposed scenario, their modeling shows even under drought conditions, the water level being higher than it has historically been on average during drought conditions. So it sort of comes down to how you feel about the modeling and all that. What I'll, what I would say to our council is modeling like this is what we've been asking them to do for Lake Whitney, I mean, for Lake Aquila. If we are part of paying for the updated study of Lake Aquila, they're going to come back with modeling and reports and stuff just in effort like this. And, and I think the question that we have to ask is, if this is how we figure out if we can get the water that we need in the future, then this is the process, you know? This is what it looks like. So in terms of which of the study alternatives is best, that's going to be a conversation between Rastor Authority, US Army Corps of Engineers, the likes of officials. From, from what I understand, I think the greatest concern is about what might changes do to the lake economy that our neighbors have built their lives and businesses around. And I'll just tell you, the way I understand the model, it indicates that the, that the impact would be minimal. That's what I understand from their presentation. And I would encourage people to review the presentation. It's all available online. That is my report to you.
All right, and for the businesses, maybe as.
Sorry, I have to stop.
We got you, uh, we're just.
Well, no, that's okay. So we can skip that with, the only thing I'll say on the complaint, we've done a maintenance analysis, we've done three surveys, we've had two public meetings and flexes, and then what we're oaching towards is an understanding of different growth scenarios. And I'm going to warn everybody now, there's going to be a growth scenario that says we're all very spread out. There's going to be a growth scenario that says we're all squished together. This is going to be cheaper to maintain, this is going to be super expensive to maintain. Both of those are going to be unpalatable on someone. So it's a question of somewhere in the middle, what can we make work? What are the trade-offs that we're willing to make? And so I would encourage. And so I would encourage people not to get too excited or fearful of the extremes because neither of them are likely. Fire Commission, we're, I think, quote-unquote, good with the Fire Commission. Working on topics to cover in the upcoming council workshop. Autoethics is coming. And then Assistant City Manager Tony King will wrap up with supporting conservation.
Mayor, I was up here, updating item number three. Specifically regarding code enforcement staffing, we were able to get Antonio back, so he started last week. And next week, Mike Hayes will start as our second code enforcement officer. I'm sorry. Our, I need to make sure I get this right correctly. Yes, code appliance. Grass picking, some staffs may contact several individuals and advise them of organs. Staff has also made a social media post in our report, thank you for that, of course. Update on the non-store stop, we have a meeting with the owners tomorrow to talk about the bank account in the future, near future. No current update on informings. Eight Forty Motel, the owners are currently working with two franchise motels. Once they get that certified, they can start further shooting the building. Walmart, everything is completely fire-planned, final flow test. Colonel, no updates when that will take place. Building stands at the board meeting are going to be held at this location on September 18th. We will be taking two structures before them. Those rural operations local man, want to thank them for taking the time and the effort to clean all the tables and chairs here at store two hall, as well as them planning on being a major part of the city. White cleanup is coming in. Kirk cleanup, staff has been working chases, sending letters and putting the door anchors out. Overall, these are parts that's now officially open. Soon as our storage building is almost complete, next steps is to, our building to final inspection and issue a certification policy. City white cleanup, safe for this year, September 27th. The school district has allowed us to use Eagle Field parking lot again, and we'll be picking up trash there from 7:00 AM until 11:30 AM. And then from 11:30 to 2:00 PM, you can drop off items at the grocery store.
There, there. All right, it's 6:57, meeting adjourned.